Good evening, welcome to the Board of Trustees workshop session dated January 29, 2025. I'd like to call the order, and Karen, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Bradrick?
Present.
Trustee Garcia again. Trustee Harris?
Present.
Trustee Lee? Trustee Morales?
Here.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Here.
Trustee Queenie?
Present.
Trustee Bazinski?
Present.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Item 1.3, Pledge of Allegiance. Jeff, since you moved to the front, I'm going to let you do the pledge tonight.
Thanks, right. (inaudible) of the United States of America, in its due republic for which it stands, one nation, America, in whose physical liberty and justice.
Thank you. Item 1.4, Public Comments. Karen, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Thank you. Item 1.5, Review of January 31, 2024 Workshop Minutes.
We don't have them.
Yeah, you do. Actually, they're right here, yes.
Oh, these are they?
Yeah. We need a motion in a second.
We need time to read them.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of January 31, 2024 workshop as soon as the rest of my colleagues are, have completed reading their minutes.
I'd like to second that, but again, give everybody time to finish reading before we move to vote.
I think so.
Mm-hmm. Ready, Karen?
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 2, New Business, under 2.1, Opening Remarks, Dr. Numul.
Chairman Bazinski and trustees of the Board and members of the JJC community, I want to take a moment, and hopefully, Chairman, my remarks can blend, or kind of transition smoothly into 2.2 here, and I think they will. I want to take the opportunity to first thank the trustees for your service to the JJC community. You all do this in service to our students and the communities we serve, and I think that's honestly just a really great thing. You all are involved in a variety of other things in the community, whether you're full-time, currently full-time students, or involved in township government, or running your own business, yet, yet, you still find time to engage in the work that we've asked you to engage in, show up to events. You know, the nursing pinning comes to mind, Main Street comes to mind, for a variety of you, a number of you. So I just want to thank you for your service and your continued service to Joliet Junior College, to start. Next, Chairman, the fiscal year '26 budget, you know, this is, for those of you who've been around, this is a regularly scheduled event, and we're on the same timeline that we've been on for the last few years. The FY '26 budget is one that, again, is future-focused and student-centered. It resources our key strategic priorities. In some areas, and in some cases, works to stabilize the operations of the college. In other areas, aspires to optimize the operations, and the strategic direction of the college is once again, we've committed to presenting you with a balanced budget, is once again, and will be, a balanced budget that we present to you in final form in the upcoming months. The FY '26 budget resources an ambitious agenda to maximize our impact on the communities we serve, the local economies that depend on our graduates, the economic development partners that rely on us, on JJC, to develop the workforce in energy, in advanced manufacturing, in education, in healthcare, in cybersecurity, in agriculture, first responders, I could go on and on and on. Our communities and those economies need us, and we remain committed to being responsible stewards of public funds, and you'll see that represented, Chairman, today. Lastly, Chairman, I want to thank trustee Stamborsky and trustee Morales as members of the Finance Committee for engaging in this work with us. And with that, it's my pleasure to hand it over and just give a quick shout-out to Karen Kissel and the team, Jeff Heep, Darrell Langlois. And with that, Chairman, if you'll allow me, to advance to item 2.2 on the agenda and introduce our controller, Jeff Heep.
(audience laughing) Waiting for the slide to get up there. Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, I'll give a brief update, kind of where we stand in the current year, and then we'll get into the assumptions and the projections for '26, and then as we extend those out into '27 and '28 preliminary numbers, what stuff's trending and looking like. For the current year, operating revenues, we kind of just passed 10th day of spring, paid credit hours are running slightly over budget. We kind of factored in a 1.5% enrollment growth. It's probably closer to 2, 2.5. And the projections, when I was putting numbers in, it kind of looked like we were going to be about 2,000 hours over in total unpaid hours. We're probably turning a little more like 3,000 hours at the current point. State revenue, our budget, we built was 10.45 million. The actual allocation to us was a tad over 10.8, so we're good from a budget perspective there. Property taxes, I think it was back in October when we were estimating it, you know, do expect new construction to be a little higher than what the budget was based on. I will not have final numbers on this until like March timeframe, but expect it to be slightly over budget. And interest revenue, we're going to be considerably over budget, about $1 million more. Did not see the rate reductions kind of materialize like they thought. We've gone from an inverse rate, inverse rate table to kind of a normal rate table, that our three- and four-year, five-year treasury notes that we've been buying, the rates really haven't fluctuated much all year, that we're still earning, you know, somewhere that 4.1%, 4.2%. And we've got quite a ladder built out all the way through like September of '29. So we've got a fair amount of stuff kind of locked in with some budget stability there. On the expense side, still running quite a bit in vacancies, about 2.8 million. Seems to be trending a little bit better than it has last year or two, but still, just kind of the, seems like there's always 20 or 25 full-time staff vacant, you know, that two- or three-month cycle to get them refilled. Adjunct faculty overloads, we're currently trending within budget. It's nice to see that, that new enrollment's kind of been absorbed, that it helps from a budget perspective going forward.
Do you have any of this in print, so we can see it in print?
Thanks for that reminder, trustee Bradrick.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, thank you so much. Of course. Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
For contractual, you know, the supply utilities, travel lines, and that's a lot of different individual budget lines across, you know, 100 departments, individually small budgets, but usually, not all of it is spent, that there's usually million, million-five fallout. And then our contingency is fully intact, that nothing's been earmarked on that. So at the current point, revenues are running slightly over budget, and expenditures are running under budget. Whoops, jumped two slides on me. As we look forward to '26 and kind of start the assumptions, as we build this, or as we build this budget for next year, our base operating grant, we're expecting a slight reduction possibly, and that's based on assuming no new state funding to the system as a whole, and then it's based on credit hours two years ago, so it'd be the FY '24 credit hours. System-wide, from what I can figure out so far, I haven't seen final numbers, looks like system-wide hours are up about 6%. Our hours will get paid on, we're up about 5%. So, you know, you assume the rate kind of goes down 6%, but our hours only went up about 5%. And then CTEs, Career and Technical Education, that's a grant based on those credit hours. It usually doesn't fluctuate too much from the 750,000. Tuition revenue, you know, the starting point will be the hours for the current year, and then assumed a 1.5% enrollment growth, and no change in the tuition rate. Property taxes, kind of assumed like 1.1% new revenue, which is about 325 million in new construction within our district. Consumer Price Index was 2.9% for last year. That was released back in, I think, about the second week in January. So that's factored in, that combined is about a 4% increase that we could expect from property taxes, and it equates to about 2.8 million. And then interestingly, we feel pretty comfortable budgeting 4 million, based on where we're trending so far this year, and that even gives a assumption there'll be a little bit of a drop in what we get for the money market rates, if they do another one or two rate On the personnel side, it's driven by the union contract, which, the only one up in negotiations is adjuncts right now. So there's 3% to 5% factored in there, depending on the union it is in the position. So that's about 3.1 million of additional cost. Benefits, we're trending fine in the current year, in our self-insurance fund, based on expectations, but health insurance trend is projected to be 7%, so that's what we have factored in there. Material supplies, contractual travel, right now we have the 3% increase, kind of similar to the Consumer Price Index. And then utilities, kind of factored in a 4%. And then currently, within the projections, have kind of a set aside for strategic initiatives that are identified, potentially in the budget process of 500,000, and then funding the second year of the advisor model. That was a three-year plan, so this would be the second year adding four academic advisors.
You said it's the second year?
Second year, would be for '26.
'26.
Yeah. So it's 4 and 25, 4 and 26, and 4 and 27.
Jeff, can I interrupt you for just one minute and get rid of some administrative items?
Yeah.
Prior to the meeting, we, the Secretary of the Board and myself, were advised by one of the members that they would not be able to attend in person, and since we've been determined to have a quorum, she would like to join us remotely, unless there's an objection from the Board or a motion to object from the Board.
No, no, no objection.
No objections? Okay. Then Michelle has joined us remotely.
Thank you, Karen.
Sorry, sir, you may.
No, no, you're fine. Is she on, or do we need to wait?
Yeah, she's on, but we can't see because of the screen you're on, so.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Is there any other questions on the advisor model? To kind of boil down all the assumptions, just in kind of a quick table format, kind of went through everything in the FY '26 column there. As we look forward into '27 and '28, kind of assuming level funding on the state, not going to assume any additional revenue at this point. Property taxes, new construction, kind of decrease it a little bit to 1%. I assume Consumer Price Index is going to potentially trickle back, continue going down a little bit, that we have 2.5% factored in there, 1.5% enrollment growth on an annual basis. And then in '27 and '28, we did factor in a $3 tuition rate increase, is what's in the numbers right now. On the expenditure side, salaries, I said tied in with kind of the union contracts, you know, they kind of, most of them is the third or fourth year of the contracts, they're basically in that 3% to 4% range, assuming similar for '28. Medical trend at 7, other kind of mirrored it to the Consumer Price Index, and then we've always kind of, especially when you get in the out-years, up the utility one just a little bit to, just in case. Showed the third year of the advisor model, and then did set aside, or in the projections, having a half-million dollar of new initiatives each additional year built into the projections.
What's the contingency?
For this right now, we've eliminated the contingency.
Okay.
Which, I'll show it here.
Okay.
It's kind of one of those with the year-end surpluses, do we need the budget for it?
So we'll have more in the income side because of the fact that you're no longer putting the contingency there?
Yes, more, not so much on the revenue side.
Expense.
It'd be more to expenses.
Right, so that's going to add back to our revenue side of not being negative at all, right? If you're, if you're, if you're not giving it to us in '26, '27, and '28, and you had 700 here, and I'm looking at where you're forecasting all these different numbers, and I'm seeing the tuition increase, I'm wondering what effect not having that in there would do, because I'm not in fan of favoring of increasing tuition.
It'd decrease the projected deficit.
Okay.
So showing here is kind of the FY '25 budget that was adopted, and then with those assumptions went through, where FY '26 is projected to be the, you know, slight deficit at this point. But kind of being conservative on the revenues and trying to be realistic on the expenses, more of a worst-case scenario, you know, it does show potential for deficits in '27 and '28, but in reality, it's not a, especially in '27, it's really only 1% of budget, we're not talking a 5%. And a few changes or some, you know, there's a few things that can be done to bring that in line. And then the bottom is trying to show just what the additional revenue, basically the $3 tuition increase does.
When you go back to utilities, and I'm going to ask this, because I've heard this going around, the local grade schools and high schools, have we ever thought of solar? They're exploring solar for utilities.
There's a decent-sized solar field out there, that the power comes directly to us.
Right, but they're talking about putting them on the buildings, too. That's why I'm asking.
I know if you ask our facility director, he doesn't want anything on the roof.
Okay, that's true, because they're looking at cutting, they're looking at cutting costs in the, in the grade schools and high schools, and that's the first thing they're looking into right now, is what it would be to put it on their buildings. Because some of those schools lost power today, and they didn't have the big generators to go in, so that came up as solar.
We are in the process of negotiating a contract, my name is Karen, oh, sorry. We are in the process of negotiating with a contract with different vendors to put solar at Weidendorf. I know we've had that initial conversation with you, so we'll be bringing forward a resolution with a contractor soon, and that will take Weidendorf completely off the grid. So that's one cost savings that we're able to do at Weidendorf. And then obviously, we have the solar fields out here.
Okay.
And it won't be on the roof. I know that.
It's fine until you got to do some work on the roof, then you got to deal with the panels. From a calendar, you know, we're talking about the financial plan tonight, at the February meeting, kind of a resolution confirming those planned tuition increases. I know Dr. Gray is reviewing course fees, if there's any recommended changes, the plan is the March meeting. And then at the May meeting, we talk about the budget presentation, along with the preliminary budget for final adoption at the June meeting.
Do we think, and I'm going to ask this of all, since we've got an upcoming election, and we may have new people coming on, are we thinking of having another budget workshop so that they're familiar? Because we've got people coming on that don't know higher education budgets.
That was something I was thinking about, too, especially with the budget approval being in May, and the new student trustee at least coming on in April, and then we have three other positions.
I think we should have another one, so you can familiarize the new people, because they're going to come blank going, what is this? You know that.
Yeah, trustee Bradrick, I'll jump in. The timing of the municipal elections is not ideal.
No, it's not. Because, yeah.
But I would point to our most recent example, where trustee Harris came on board, and we were able to get her, and she was able to kind of learn what she needed to learn. Thankful that a lot of these meetings, all of them, are recorded. So we commit, as an administration, to whoever is seated here, to get them as, as much information as they need to make an informed decision as it relates to the budget.
Yeah. We do cover that in the new trustee orientation.
Yeah.
And in regards to the course fee recommendations, are we seeing increases in any of those, or potentials?
Probably. I mean, it's possible, I could look at it. There, there will be some for sure, because we have new courses.
Yeah, I can hear you.
There will be some, because we have new courses, so those come through every year. All the chairs right now are looking over to see what they are. We also look to see if there's some that need to come down. Over the last couple of years, we've tried to make them more consistent, because we really haven't had a way to, like a formula for that. So I think there will be some, especially in the healthcare area, just because the crisis of things have gone up, but we're collecting that data, we'll have it ready for the Board packet on February 10.
And now that you mentioned health, did we increase the benefits from 6 to 7, or was it always at 7% healthcare cost? Because I'm looking at.
The last couple of years, I think it's been 7. I think prior to that, we were kind of using 6 for a few years.
6, right, that's what I thought. So we're increasing it, and that's a cost of a million, 1.100?
I see that we are self-funded, right, for health? The employees, what does the employees, our staff, pay for their own insurance? Do they have to pay a portion?
It's a formula, and it's, it's their salary divided kind of the TOPS pay scale for faculty, so that percentage multiplied by 8% of the cost.
So they do pay something, right?
Yes.
It's not, like, where the employees get free insurance, they pay nothing, but then if they add dependents, then they pay for dependents?
It's single?
It is single or family coverage, and then there's a rate for single and a rate for family, whether they have two dependents or five dependents.
Got it.
So it is a percentage of their salary in relation to the monthly premium. We also have a fully insured plan, because we have an HMO plan, I think we have 60-something employees participate in that, and the remainder participate in the PPO plan, which is self-insured.
Got it, okay, thank you for that.
What's their deductible?
$2,500 on the PPO plan.
It's 2,500, is that for family or individual?
It's per individual with a max of 5,000.
Okay. In regards to the insurance, do we still keep former employees that have contracts, they're off of it, so we don't allow it, them to stay on our COBRA, correct?
COBRA's different.
I know COBRA's different, that's, but I'm asking, do we allow them to stay on? Or do we allow them to COBRA? So I'm asking both sides of it.
Under their federal rights, they are entitled to COBRA, to continue for a period of 18 to 36 months.
Right.
We have very few people that take the COBRA benefit, and if they're retiring from the institution, and they've been full-time in the state university's plan, then likely they're eligible for the state plan, which doesn't run through us, we're not paying their bills or anything like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. When we're looking at expenses, have we seen increases in the expenses from last year to this year, this year projected? And if so, how much, the percentage?
Factored in 3% for '26.
So you're factoring in 3% of an increase?
Yeah.
And that's not dealing with salaries? I'm looking at removing salaries, what have we done that minus the salary increases? Because those are always considered, they're always there.
Others, kind of that material supplies.
So others falls into that?
Yeah.
The 3%, 2.5, 2.5?
Yeah.
Okay. And when you're looking at the property taxes, and I know you're familiar with the fact that values have gone up considerably, do you think we're too light in what we think we're going to get for property taxes, because of the fact that, I mean, we've been noticing a lot of the school districts, what they're doing with their tax, with their, their tax levies and everything, but the homes have definitely increased?
Unless it's new property, all we get is CPI.
You just did the CPI, you didn't do anything with.
CPI, and then did 1.1% for new construction.
Okay.
325 million.
So you didn't add any extras as far as with the values increasing?
If the value increases more than consumer, than the Consumer Price Index, it just drives our tax rate down. We don't get any more money.
Okay, I'm just.
It just gets spread out a little differently, is all.
No, 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 I'm asking, because that's a confusion that people don't understand when they're looking at their tax bill somehow.
And then it's all depends on how their home or taxing did compared to everybody else. Exactly.
Thanks.
I just want to correct, how's the deductible? Sorry, I, it didn't sound right, it's $1,000 per person.
I thought it was lower.
You said the out-of-pocket, didn't you?
I think I said the out-of-pocket, 25.
Thank you, I thought it was lower. And Jeff, my question's going to come back to tuition, because I know some of us that were on the Board were afraid of a significant tuition increase, when you brought it to us a couple of years ago. What avoided that, when you see 3, versus I thought it was 18 or something that we had talked about? had talked about?
Yeah.
There's been more state revenue, because I mean, we had probably about three years there of an average of 5% increase in state funding.
Yeah.
And another big factor, interest income.
Okay.
I mean, we went from five years ago having a couple hundred thousand of interest income to having 4 million, just because rates were, you could barely earn 20 basis points.
Right.
And now we're earning 4.
Right, and I think we, as trustees on the Board at that time, were very sensitive to any tuition increases. I know that several of us were concerned and wanting to see that we didn't vote for that, because we were concerned about that significant of an increase, like we did one year when we did increase it, but we gave the debit cards back to the kids. Okay.
Jeff, I wanted to, Trustee Broderick, this is a great question, so I would probably offer, Jeff, that you maybe talk just a little bit about CPPRT as well, and how that impacted. But before you do that, you know, if, you know, I've been really impressed since I've been here at the ways Karen, Jeff, and the team have explored efficiencies. So instead of just coming to me or Dr. Farmer and proposing a slew of new positions, we've, we've reallocated, and we've sought efficiencies, we being Karen and Jeff and their team sought efficiencies throughout the organization, so we're not just adding, 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 but we're repurposing, we're reallocating as we're able to do that. So I wanted to make that point, and Jeff, if you could offer the CPPRT info.
Glad you're going in that direction.
Yeah.
The replacement tax is one of those funding from the state that's a little, you don't know what you're going to get till you get it, and it's been a bit of a rollercoaster the last four years. You go back, like I said, I think it was '20 or '21, that, I don't have the recap in front of me, there for a number of years, we received 2 million, 2.1, 2.2 million, and then it was like after COVID hit, what we started seeing went through the roof, that the one year, I think we got almost $6 million. And it was like, it was all over the CFO this serve of, okay, what do we budget for this? You hate to build a budget with that in when it's going to fall off a cliff. We end up factoring in our budget assumes a little over $3 million in CPPRT. We've seen that trend back down, that this current year, we're on pace that we're going to only receive a little over $3 million. So it went up to 6, it kind of went to 5, 4.5 last year, if I remember right?
Yeah.
And we're trending back down.
Or be more conservative.
Well, we never built a budget on it, because I was afraid to.
I agree.
But it's kind of coming back down to where our budget is.
Got it.
And that helped contribute to some of the surpluses we had the previous few years.
Trustee Broderick also connects to your contingency question as well, and the removal of a contingency, kind of all of that factors into that.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that's it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving from 2, we're going to skip all the way down to 5, and I need a motion for an adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries, we're adjourned.